Item number 11. Water, wastewater, reclaimed water rate study presentation. One of two on capacity fees and miscellaneous fees presentation from StanTech. That's a mouthful. Welcome Erin.
Good evening Council, Erin Young, Water Resources Manager and Project Manager for the rate study. Quick update before we turn it over to StanTech. We did hold a public information meeting last Thursday night at 5:30 PM. People could call in or join to view the presentation. It was informational, it was a great presentation, it is available on cleanwaterflagstaff.com. So just providing more background information. Prior to coming forward with actual numbers for you. Tonight, we have an informational presentation preparing you for. Direction on capacity fees, so how are they calculated? And how are other fees calculated? We didn't want to provide this all to you in one big night. So this is part one of two, as it says in the title, so. Carol, are you ready to roll?
I am Erin, thank you. Good evening Mayor and Members of Council, thank you for sticking around this long to listen to me talk about this. Rate study with you again. Tonight.
We can't go anywhere, so. We are happy to have this presentation, but we're not allowed to leave, so.
I'm sorry to hear that, but I think you will, I think you will enjoy this presentation. I'm going to talk tonight about just a very short agenda, but there's a lot of material here. I'm going to just basically remind you what our scope is. I'll talk about the technical analysis to date. And I apologize in advance if you were looking forward to some results. That will happen in January because we're still working through some of the data. However, I will talk to you about where we stand with capacity fees, with miscellaneous fees, and with the cost of service analysis. I'll provide you some data on the customers, your usage and accounts, so we'll talk about that. At the end of each of these sections, if you'd like to ask questions, that would be great. Or if you wanted to wait till I get to the end, that's fine too, whatever you decide. To start, you've seen this graphic before. These are the primary steps and the tasks in the rate study. We've been working since May and right now we are here on task three. There's a lot of technical analysis that's been going on and your staff led by Erin, it have been wonderful. So they've done a lot of work alongside us. The first task that I'm going to talk about tonight would be the capacity fees and miscellaneous fee calculations. The important part of this graphic is the approach. I'll briefly talk about the methodologies that we can use when we're calculating capacity fees and the legal requirements. We'll talk about those approaches where we are to date on calculating the capacity fees. We'll talk a little bit about miscellaneous fees, so these are additional fees for service. And then finally, we're plugging it all together to determine that appropriate level of fees. These fees are important because they help minimize the rates and charges that you have to charge to your ratepayers for their monthly user fees. So we're trying to recover the cost of service from the appropriate users. First off on the legal guidance for capacity fees. Capacity fees are established in your, in your statutes and your, your Arizona Revised Statute, Section 9-463.05. And what's important about this, the reason that we mention this is the fact that we're calling them capacity fees. Capacity fees is the proper term to refer to these one-time charges for services that the city provides beyond the city limits. So these are the capacity fees. This is different from the development impact fee terminology. I am not an attorney, so there's probably someone that says there's, there's more distinctions there. But we know that we're going to, we're going to refer to these fees as capacity fees within the city. The capacity fee approach is very simple, the math is very simple. It's essentially a one-time charge to new connections or new development. And it finances or covers the costs of the growth portion of your capital improvements, of your increases in capacity. That's very simple, this formula that I'm showing you has that total system value divided by the system capacity. To arrive at a capacity fee or a cost per unit of service. Right here in this graphic, I'm showing single-family equivalent, but we also can call those equivalent residential units. Or gallons per day or million gallons per day. The actual unit is not the important thing, the important thing is that the formula and the calculation is very simple. The issue is that there are multiple approaches that are acceptable in the industry. The American Water Works Association and Water Environment Federation gives us three methods. And we call them the buy-in method, the incremental method, and the combined method. The buy-in method is actually a backward-looking approach where we look at your historical investments in your water, wastewater and reclaimed systems. This is a good approach if you have available capacity in your existing system. And by capacity, I mean that, that treatment and water resources and also your transmission and distribution on the water side. And then wastewater treatment, wastewater. Collection and interceptors on the wastewater side. Typically, when you use this approach, you, you have little need for capacity from new projects or new CIP. The second method is the incremental method. And by this, we're looking at the forward-looking part of your infrastructure investment. Here, we're looking at your capital improvements, more specifically, the growth-related capital improvements. So we're limited to just that portion of your projects that is for new customers or expansions of your systems. Typically, you don't have much capacity available in your existing system when you're looking at this forward-looking approach. More commonly in the industry, a utility will have both capacity in its existing system and in the future, or and in the planned for the future. So a combined method is the, it's a pretty typical approach for a lot of the utilities that we work with. So you have available capacity on both sides and it actually is a weighted capacity cost for your existing system and your new system. Your current approach, you had that rate study completed back in 2016. And the capacity fees that were developed back in 2016 that are still relevant today were derived using the incremental method. In your report, if you have that on your shelf, it's actually called the plan method. But that's not a term that is typically used in the industry, so we're using the incremental method, it means the same thing. The exception here is that for wastewater treatment, the approach uses the combined method. So it uses a hybrid of your existing treatment capacity and the future capacity. When we're going forward with looking at these fees, it's important to understand how your current fees are calculated. And speaking of your current fees, this is the schedule that you can find online for your current capacity fees. I'm just going to very briefly highlight some key points to this schedule, there's a lot going on here. But we can boil it down to the fact that the capacity fee is on a equivalent meter basis. So water meters are used to determine how much a new customer will pay for their capacity fee. A three-quarter inch water meter is a typical residential meter size. That's what we call our equivalent residential unit. So what your current capacity fee in this column underwater capacity fees is $5,728 for a three-quarter inch meter. The sewer capacity fee is $3,723 for a three-quarter inch meter. If you look further on your schedule, you'll see that if you have a multi-family unit that is three-quarter inch water meters, it's the same rate. Five thousand, same fee, $5,728. And the sewer capacity fee is the same, but it also is based on each dwelling unit. The commercial schedule is very similar, it has that three-quarter inch base meter size for a single-family resident. And that water capacity is the same, $5,728 and the sewer capacity is the 3,700. This is a very typical approach for assessing your capacity fees to new customers, it's based on meter size. I do have some numbers to show you, but as you see, this is draft for our discussions. And when we come back, we are hoping to fill in the red areas here in this table. We are compiling information for all three methodologies for your water fund and wastewater fund. This is so that you can make the decision on which approach you feel is the best for your community, based on the information that we're giving you. What we have today is some information on the fixed assets or the existing infrastructure in your water and wastewater fund. Fixed assets can be valued a number of different ways, we can use the original cost of the asset. We could use the net book value of the asset. For those of you that are finance people, you probably understand these terms. A common approach that we find in the industry is the replacement cost new less depreciation. So RC NLD, and it's essentially the original cost of the asset in today's dollars. So we put a cost escalator on those dollar amounts and then we take out depreciation. So the value of your system in today's dollars with, with all the depreciation subtracted. The water fund value in that, in those terms is 181.8 million and the wastewater fund is 182.9 million. The second piece of information we need for a buy-in method calculation is the existing capacity of your system. The existing capacity determined with discussions, through discussions with your staff is up 16.9 million gallons per day or MGD. That means that your water system can deliver on a, it's actually a maximum day basis, 16.9 million gallons per day. We're saying that the treatment is the limiting factor in this case. So the treatment through your wells and your, the rest of your system is that limit. We can talk more about that later if you're curious about that. On the wastewater side, in discussions with your staff, we've saw, seen that the interceptors or the larger. Pipes that collect wastewater from all of your customers and deliver it to the wastewater treatment plant is the limiting factor. And that treatment, or excuse me, that capacity is 10.28 million gallons per day. This is an important discussion that we've had and it also will drive the results. The second method that we're going to, that we have some values for is the total, the incremental method. That's where we look at your capital improvement program costs. And we talked with you at great length about those capital improvement program costs back in October. So we have the total CIP on the water side as 209.5 million, but we're limited to the expansion portion only, or the growth portion only. So when we are looking at just that growth piece, it's 70.5 million. On the wastewater side, out of 112.3 million dollars over 10 years, by the way. The, there are 36.8 million dollars of growth-related capital improvements. Some of these growth-related capital improvements are a portion are for existing customers and a portion are for growth. So we have, we don't have all projects that are either or, sometimes we have what we call multi-purpose projects. The next piece that's critical to obtain for the incremental method calculation is the capacity provided. In addition to what's existing, so that's what we call the incremental capacity. And that's still in progress, we're still working on that. That means that the combined method. Sums together the values of your existing system and your growth-related CIP. And it also sums together the total system capacity. That simple calculation that is shown to you at the beginning is something that we're going, that we have. And we'll divide the total system value by the total system capacity to calculate the fee. One last piece of information that we'll ask you to consider, and that's what we call the level of service. I mentioned earlier that the three-quarter inch water meter size is our standard, our basis for a single-family residential equivalent. Well, we also know that a single-family residential equivalent requires a certain amount of capacity in the systems, water and wastewater systems. We call that the level of service. And the level of service in this case is a maximum day amount of water needed or wastewater flow that is used. You're, there's two alternatives here that we're looking at. The existing fee, so your existing capacity fee was based on a level of service that looked at. The actual usage for your residential customers and the actual peaking for your act, for your existing customers. That value was 286 gallons per day and that is a value that came from your water system master plan, water infrastructure master plan. On the wastewater side, that value was determined to be 90% of the water level of service. So we get 257 gallons per day. These values are important because when we calculate the fee for the, the combined method or the incremental method or any of these methods. We then multiply that fee by the level of service to calculate the dollar amount to charge to new customers for a three-quarter inch meter. So if you're dividing. A large number by a small number, you can imagine what that dollar amount will be. Whereas when we are looking at. The proposed alternative to level of service, we're looking at your, your actual design capacity. For a single-family residential equivalent. So we're looking at how much is needed to reserve in your system for a single-family residential equivalent. And using your, your code, the city code, we calculate that that value is 875 gallons per day. On the wastewater side, a 90% factor was used to calculate the wastewater level of service and that's 788 gallons per day. These two approaches result and will result in different fees. And here's a little teaser for you, when we come back to talk to you next, we will show you what those results are. And this is just an example, and again, I mentioned that your existing capacity fee for a three-quarter inch meter. Using the lower level of service is $5,728 for the water fund and $3,723 for the wastewater fund. I have one more capacity fee slide before you might be interested in asking questions. And that's a capacity fee comparison. If you recall, a few months ago, we showed you what your regular water and wastewater bills are compared to your peers. And those peers were factored in based on some discussions with staff. So we have, some of your peers are university communities like Boulder and Bend and Golden, Colorado. Boulder, Colorado, Golden, Colorado, Bend, Oregon. And then here are your current capacity fees. Then we have some other mountain towns in Colorado and some towns, I shouldn't say town, cities near, near you. So with this comparison, you could see that Flagstaff's current capacity fees are in the upper, roughly upper third of the sample. But the thing to remember is that many of these communities are currently reviewing their capacity fees. They're undergoing studies just like you, so these are fees currently today. They likely will change, and in fact, I know for a fact that Pagosa Area Water and Sanitation District in Colorado is raising their fees a lot. So these are, these fees are undergoing some changes and we do not have the final adopted values yet, but that would be something to consider. Another thing I ask you to consider is that each of these communities has different levels of service. Different capacities in their system and they are at a different stage with their, their systems. So whether they have existing capacity or they're planning for future capacity, that makes a difference in their fee. So you just have to take that into consideration when you're looking at this comparison. I'm going to pause here if you would like to ask questions or if you want me to keep going.
Counsel, do you have questions?
I have a question and my apologies if I didn't catch it when you were presenting. So I've been asked before why our capacity fees are so high. And that's not in relation to any other community, it's just a statement. And this is, if I'm understanding correctly. We're only charging what it actually costs to deliver that service, correct?
Mayor, there's a little bit of a distinction there that it is, you're caught charging the value of the infrastructure. That is required to deliver the service. So the operating and maintenance expenses are not included. It's essentially the, in the current approach that you, that's followed for your fees. It's essentially what is planned for your capital improvements over a 10-year period. And that 10-year period was set back in 2016.
And so if we have large capital improvement needs. We're needing to, to think about those as we're planning 10 years out. So that at some future time. Homes aren't being charged more to make up for what we didn't account for. Does that make sense and is that correct?
That's the, that is the correct intent of establishing capacity fees based on your plan for capital improvements. We're trying to avoid subsidization of new, of existing customers, excuse me, of new customers by existing customers and vice versa. So you're right.
Wonderful, thank you.
I could continue if you like.
That would be good, thank you.
Okay, thanks. The next section is short, this is the miscellaneous fee section that I was talking to you about. And again, we know where we're going, we don't have any dollars for you yet. But you might wonder, why are we spending time on this? Miscellaneous fees are sometimes called ancillary fees, these are, these are services that water services provides to customers. And they are items like on the water side, a water meter installations, service charges, whether it's to set up an account. Or there's a late fee that needs to be charged for non-payment of service. Or it could be permits for watering outside of your regular days. There are backflow prevention permits, unauthorized connections, you know, penalties for, for messing with your system. So all of these fees on the water side are important to review as well as the sewer side, the wastewater side, industrial pretreatment discharge fees. Those scavenger wastes that the city's wastewater department. Actually incurs costs to treat the septic waste from waste haulers, restaurant grease and solid waste. All of these fees require staff, time, effort, you know, all of this, all of the costs. So we're trying to recover the costs from those cost causers. So that they don't have to be factored into the regular water and sewer rates for monthly users. The fee process to calculate these costs of service can be summarized on the, what I've got here on the slide. We actually find out what are the activities that are provided in order to, to complete the service. So we look at the staff, like I said, and the hours needed to complete this. We have a cost computation template, StanTech has a model for everything and we have one for miscellaneous fees. We can also survey your other utilities to do some benchmarking for items such as late fees or dishonored check fees or those kinds of things. So that we're not always trying to determine exactly what costs are required. This could be a survey or a benchmarking type of a review. The formula is here and it just basically it'll assist in determining what the costs of service are for each of these fees. And then we'll discuss how much of that cost you would like to recover through the fees. Any questions on miscellaneous fees, that was pretty short.
I don't see any.
Thank you. The last part of this discussion is going to be the cost of service analysis. The cost of service analysis is what that task three title is and it involves multiple parts. So for what we're going to talk about tonight, we're going to talk about customer class usage characteristics. Because that is the foundation of the term cost of service. We look at the proportional impacts on your system by different customers in order to recover the appropriate cost of service. Then we'll look at how you allocate the system cost to different functions of your water system and your wastewater system, and I'll go over that. When we allocate costs to functional components, we can then, at the end of the day, distribute those costs to the different customer classes and calculate rates. That's our ultimate goal, we want to be able to justify and support your rates, so that, that's why we go through these steps. We'll first talk about customer class characteristics. I know that you're probably familiar with your current water rate schedule, but I'm just going to talk about it really quickly. Your water rates for monthly users are made up of a fixed charge or base charge and a volume rate. The monthly fixed charge, here we go again with the meter size. We have a different meter size charge for that monthly charge and we have an inside-city rate and an outside-city rate. So there's a multiplier applied for outside-city customers. The water rates for usage are based on 1,000 gallons of usage. And for single-family, the rates are called a tiered rate structure or inclining block rate structure. This is a pretty typical rate structure in the industry when you're enhancing conservation. When you're trying to send a signal to customers that the more water they use, the pricier it's going to be and the bill, their bill will get higher. It's intended to incentivize conservation. Your current tiers have different amounts of water that are included in each tier. So for the first tier, your usage from zero gallons a month to up to 3,500 gallons a month is priced at the lowest water rate. So that's $3.44 inside the city. If you use above that 3,500 gallons, just like a thousand gallons more, that pops you up into tier two. So for the first 3,500 gallons, you pay $3.44 per thousand. Then for that additional thousand that you might use, you pay $4.45. So it gets added together. And then the same concept is true for tier three, if you use over 6,200 gallons, you get charged in that tier three as well. And then the, the highest users are in tier four and that's any usage greater than 11,500 gallons at the highest rate of $13.72. I'm not going to talk about the water energy charge or the water resource charge because those are external to this rate study. We also have unit rates or water rates per thousand gallons for your other customer classes. And that is true because of their usage characteristics. Just a little caveat here, when we look at your rate structure, we will look at alternative rate structures for these other types of customer classes. As well as single-family. So that's the water rate structure. How many customers do you have in your water system? We compiled billing data for 2023 fiscal year 2023, so starting in July of 2022 and ending in June of 2023. Your customers, as you can imagine, are primarily residential. The residential in this case includes multi-family, we have not split them out. So you have about 21,400 accounts that are considered residential or multi-family. And then these, the rest of the customer, non-residential customers are listed here in order of number of accounts. So your next highest customer class by number of accounts is a little over 1,700 for commercial customers. So in total, we're looking at 20 today, 23,617 accounts. We can compare that to the consumption by customer class. So the challenge is getting all the data in front of you on a slide. So we're just showing you inside city water consumption and the current rates. The inside city customer class usage is all listed here and it's listed in 1,000 gallons. So for example, this is 739,644,000 gallons. So this is really 739.6 million gallons. And this is consumption over a year. The single family customer class is broken down into those tiers. So out of, out of the usage for single family residential, you see that the highest proportion of usage is in that tier one. So zero to 3,500 gallons. That gives you an indication of how your residential customers are using water. We still have about 2% of that residential usage in that top tier. So you still have some customers using over 11,500 gallons. So we'll, we'll talk about that in a minute as well. The rest of your customer classes use these corresponding amounts of water. And again, this is for the fiscal year 2023. To your, the total usage inside the city, we're calculating to be 2.2 billion gallons of water. Now again, if you add to that your outside city customers, you'd have more water delivered. I'm going to move on to sewer rates. Your sewer rates are different than your water rates. Remember that we have on the water rate side, that monthly base charge or fixed charge by meter size. You do not have that currently for sewer rates. Your sewer rates are strictly a dollar per thou, a dollar amount per thousand gallons. That dollar amount varies depending on what kind of customer you are. So if you're a single family and you're an inside city customer, you pay $5.35 per thousand gallons of sewer flow. The sewer flow is interesting because we don't have sewer meters, right? For residential flow, that would be gross. But we have, our residential usage is based on averaging the water used in the winter. And those winter months are December, January, February and March. That average is calculated each year. Then it's applied as this, for the sewer bill calculations for these customers, month over month over month for the subsequent months. So it's a very stable way to bill for wastewater service. It's very common in the industry because winter months are a proxy for indoor water use and water use that gets returned to the wastewater treatment system. So it's a pretty common approach. We also have different rates for other non-residential classes. And as you had requested way back when these, when the rate study was being contemplated, we are going to be looking at these as well. For the wastewater system, you have fewer accounts. And that's because there's a lot of water accounts that are irrigation related, irrigation only. But there's also some waste, some water accounts that do not use your wastewater system. But you have quite a few that do, the most are resident, residential accounts. Again, so again, you're primarily residential accounts here. For wastewater usage, we're really talking about that flow that goes back to the wastewater treatment plant. And you can see that again, residential customers have the bulk of the flow. This is inside city again. And the, the various non-residential customers discharge this amount of flow in fiscal year 2023. It's important to understand these usage characteristics because again, we use them in our cost of service process. One more rate type and that's reclaimed. Reclaimed water, as you know, is, is from your treatment of your wastewater. And you have certain amount of customers who pay for using reclaimed water at certain times. You have that same tiered structure for residential customers for retail, excuse me reclaimed. And they pay the associated rate per thousand gallons. For non-residential, you have very specific rate structures or rate schedules. The off-peak and golf course rate is of particular interest because of how they take their water. So we're going to be looking at all of these types of rate classes for reclaimed. There are a total, or there were a total of 106 accounts. And you have various customer types, just like in water and just like in wastewater. In this case, the, the bulk of your customers are non-residential. This next table just outlines the amount of reclaimed water taken for fiscal year 2023 by each of these customer classes. I wanted to get to this slide because there's a lot of information here on the historical number of residential water bills per thousand gallons. And I believe you probably don't have this in your packet. This was something we were working on with taking the residential water bills and looking at how many water bills were issued each month and over the full year, full 12 months for increments of water usage. So the, the chart, we'll talk about this graph first. The graph shows us how many bills over a year from residential customers were issued or sent out for different levels of usage. So for no usage at all, so customers who didn't use any water, your customer, the number of bills that you sent out was just about probably like 7,000 bills for the year. Then for those customers who used 1,000 gallons of water in a month, the number of bills was just over 26,000 bills. So you know, we're looking at all those 22,000 residential customers. And we're looking at each month and how many bills were issued for different amount of usage. This is important because it helps us look at that, that distribution of usage across your residential customers and help support the different rate tiers. The boxes represent the tiers of usage. So your first tier is set to be, it's like in between the 3,000 and 4,000 gallon mark. So we're not quite as refined as getting that to 3,500 gallons. But you could probably see that your incremental or cumulative number of bills sent between 3,000 and 4,000 gallons of usage, I'm going to refer you to this table here, is, I would say is close to 60% of your residential bills. So that means the bulk of your customers are billed in that first tier. And you can look at these other tiers as well. The tier two threshold is at 6,200 gallons. So that's where that box line shows up. And then tier three is anything up to 11,500 gallons. So you have these, these increments of usage and the rates that are associated with it. So you could tell basically how customers pay for their different water usage. There's a lot, like I said, there's a lot of information on this slide. We can talk about it. I just want to make one more comment. And that aside from 2021, which we know was during the pandemic, the usage, water usage on average for residential bills is decreasing. So your conservation efforts and other, other considerations are having an effect on average water use. Do you have any questions on, this is a lot of billing data. It's a lot of customer characteristic data.
Counsel questions? Okay, I have, I have a couple. Without calling out, without calling out who they are, what are some categories of outside city water users? Are there neighborhoods that we provide water to that are just out in the county?
Yes, I have to ask Erin answer that or. And then.
I see Rick is online as well. I know we have like some HOAs that are, we wholesale water to them and they distribute it within. That's one that comes to mind. I don't know how common that is though. I don't think it's super common.
Okay, thank you. And this might be too in the weeds, I don't know. But stand pipe, is that where a water hauler goes to get water?
Yes.
And on one of your slides, it said that we just had four users under the hydrant category. So I'm, that's obviously not the individual hydrants that are around town. What is a hydrant then?
Erin, do you want to answer that too, please? Thanks.
I'm going to see if Rick Tatter has his ears on. I, I see him blinking. Yay.
I'm here. I'm ready to answer. Yeah, the hydrant is the, the meters that we set up as a temporary water source. A lot of times it's for construction purposes or it's for special events that may have water for like in the park, Wheeler Park and that kind of stuff. So that's what a hydrant meter is. It's a temporary setup.
Thank you.
And on, on the previous question, I think most of them are residential type, including like the, the pockets of commercial properties within the city of Flagstaff. We have little islands of county properties. So that would be some of those as far as the outside customers.
Thank you, Mr. Tatter.
You're welcome.
I don't see any additional questions.
Okay, thank you. I'll move on to the last part of our discussion tonight. And that is the actual cost allocation. So this is the, the next step of the cost of service analysis where we're looking at allocating system costs to the functions of the system. And very briefly, what is a function? So what's functionalization? And it's essentially taking your annual operating and maintenance expenses for water and wastewater and reclaimed and your annual debt service costs and your annual cap, cash funded capital improvement program costs and dropping them in buckets that are related to how the water and wastewater systems work. An example of this is on this slide. These are the water system functions. So for the water system functions, we work, I, I'm going to show, let's say left to right. And it starts with water resources. So this starts with the function of your water supply. And in it, you could have raw water pumping, raw water storage, but essentially is getting the water. Then you move to water production and that's essentially treatment and supply of, of that raw water. But it's treatment. So now you have finished water. Then finally you move to transmission and distribution. So this is where you take that finished water and you distribute it to your customers. Part of this is storage. So you have storage tanks and then you have pumping. So you have all these elements that are in the function of transmission and distribution. Outside of that actual activity of how water gets distributed through your system is the administration of your water system and your water fund. Administration has many components and it, part of it is basically maintaining and billing for meters and services and fire protection. It includes billing of customers and meter reading. So all of the administrative type functions. It is critical for us to divide and allocate those annual revenue requirements or annual costs into these buckets because then we can use that information not only to allocate the dollars across to customers, but also to different components that make up your rates. And the next time I talk to you, I'll probably talk to you about average day demand costs, maximum day demand costs, peak hour costs and customer costs. We can do the same thing on the wastewater side, but we go the other way. We start at the home, we start at your customers by collecting their wastewater. And then it goes into, that's the collection and conveyance network. And it goes into those larger interceptors or trunk sewers that take and convey the wastewater to the treatment plants. So the treatment plants also have their own functions and there are, there are many. One of them is to actually handle and treat the flow that comes to the plant. Another is to remove waste constituents. We commonly look at biochemical oxygen demand or BOD and total suspended solids or TSS. And I pretend that I could give you a good definition of those, but I'm not an engineer like I mentioned. So if you like definitions on what those components are, I know we can ask someone. And then finally, the, the, just like on the administrative side for water, we have customer related or administrative related costs on the wastewater side. These again, help us determine how to calculate rates and also how costs are allocated across customers. I have a treatment process flow diagram from Wildcat Hill that is in the master plan. So you could see the different, that there's even more functions or unit processes that happen at the treatment plant. So we've condensed all of these activities to a really a basic category. So all of these other types of activities that happen at the treatment plant are caught, drive the costs of the wastewater treatment system and also drive how these costs are allocated across customers. That was a very quick review of cost allocation. If you have any questions, we can, we can go back.
I don't think we do.
Fantastic. Thank you. I do have a next step slide. So that from today until Thursday, we are going to be presenting the similar information to the Water Commission at their meeting. So it's essentially the same presentation. On the 19th of January, we're going to talk with the Water Commission about the capacity fee results and options and the rate design alternatives. So we're doing, we're doing a lot at once. We'll present those, what we're looking at. And then we'll come to you and oh, I, you know what, Erin? This should be the 24th, right?
The 23rd.
23rd, excuse me. The January 23rd would be the next time we come to all of you with the results for you to consider. And I thank you for your attention. And if you have any questions from here, I'd be happy to talk through them.
I do. Where can the public continue to weigh in on the, the different options?
Mayor? I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Carol.
No, I didn't. I didn't see you. Go ahead, please.
Mayor, the public can attend Water Commission meetings, of course, and the council meetings. And we have all the, the coming dates on cleanwaterflagstaff.com. We also have a portal where people can ask us questions. They can call us. Well, we are discussing our next kind of public meetings. Once we have numbers, people will come out. But the, the meeting we had last week, we had maybe 10 people attend a chamber of commerce and some people that kind of are expecting this. But we expect the public to participate a lot more, starting in maybe January, February, March, as we roll out numbers.
Okay, so, so you're planning on having additional public meetings that are specific to this? And where it says January, well, it's going to be January 23rd. And it says selects capacity fee options and reviews. That's not the final selecting what rates that we want to adopt.
Correct, Mayor. We'll be asking for your direction on capacity fees, what model? But your decision will come in May and June.
Thank you.
And the other public opportunity, we have what's called our roadshow. And Lee Sadeem is scheduling out meetings with any groups who want us to come and talk to them about the rate study. So if you have any organizations that you're involved with, shoot an email to us and we'll reach out and try to get on their agendas.
Thank you. Counsel member Harris.
Okay, just for clarification, what type of input is the public gonna, gonna be able to have? So give me an example. So give me an example.
Councilmember Harris, the the public can have input on, well, on their water rate for residential, let's say, we're gonna give you options, a level of funding or an option on how a rate design can be changed to maybe put more of the burden, let's say, on capacity fees and take some burden off the customer so they can come in and and share how they think the rate design should be structured, you know, to help a population in Flagstaff, let's say. And and Carol can talk about maybe more creativity and and how people can comment, what they might comment on. If she, if you have any other ideas, Carol.
Well, for the for public input, you know, that's difficult to separate the level of the fee from the type of fee. So we'd have to, we would like to talk first about how fees are set. And they could comment on the share of costs that are being allocated to the, in particular, to the residential class. And then we could show how the different alternatives look for what we're presenting to you, so they could comment on that.
Thank you.
Councilmember McCarthy.
I can follow up on that question. The the last time this was done, I was on the Water Commission. So I experienced this. Just as one example, there's two parts to the monthly bill. One is a fixed rate. And if you don't get any water, you're still gonna pay that. And then the other is how much you pay per thousand gallons. And as we saw, there's four tiers. So one thing we discussed is, well, why don't we just have the fixed cost be zero? And then increase the per gallon cost and that would encourage more conservation. But then staff came back and said, well, the problem is that that makes the whole income to the water department very volatile. Where if you keep a large part of it, the monthly fee, because, you know, if somebody's only up here one month a year because it's their summer summer house, we still have to maintain the infrastructure all year long. And that gives more certainty to what the cost is or what the income is to the water department. So that's just one example of the trade offs that can be considered.
Councilmember Matthews.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to understand for the public and myself, a water bill, I'm looking at one right now. I know it's not part of the rate study. But just to understand, what is on a water bill? A water protection fee because it's based on usage? And then there's an environmental management program fee that's just a flat fee? Can you just quickly explain what those are?
Councilmember Matthews, the environmental program fee, and Rick can correct me if I get it off, if I'm off at all, but that funds sustainability. And that's my understanding partially tied to volume, not 100% tied to volume. And then the the other fee is watershed protection, I think, water resource protection fee. That goes to Neil Chapman's group. And and that fee was developed a couple of years ago to establish that wild and fire program. And that was, I understand, administrative only. There wasn't really money in there to do like treatment projects in the forest, in our watersheds.
Councilmember Harris.
Thank you, Councilmember Matthews. Those were good questions. So now I've got to ask you to explain the sustainability fee. And I'm sorry, she just opened up that can of worms. And I'm gonna ask you to explain that other fee, the wildland. So what does that go to fund? And who does it go to? Not personal names, what, you know?
I apologize for using personal staff names.
No, 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 don't, I know, I'm not asking you to do that. I'm just saying, you know, so in sustainability, what does that go to in this? And then in the wildland fire, what does that go to fund?
Yes, and and your questions, I see Rick popped up to answer those.
Yeah, so unless unless fire department's on it. The wildland fire, the resource protection fee goes to our wildland thinning, our protection of our water infrastructure around the community, sewer infrastructure and those kind of things, assuring that we thin the forests around and protect our city and that infrastructure. That that goes to wildland fire management. The environmental fee kind of helps with a lot of our, yep, I thought Nicole was on, I could have her speak more to it. But it's in line with the services that we provide around waste and water and trash and those kind of things. And it's the sustainability function of our organization in delivering those things. But I I would let Nicole explain that better since she is on today.
Hi, good evening. This is Nicole, Sustainability Director, and thank you for the question regarding the environmental management fee. Just a few years ago, the city council updated the environmental management fee ordinance, which funds the Environmental Management Fund, which provides services that sustainability executes for the community. And that encompasses our work in related to waste prevention, food systems, litter prevention, litter cleanups, climate action and so forth. And so this is the fund that has been around since 2002, is my understanding. That was before my time with the city. And it has been part of the municipal services bill since that time. It was updated back in, and Rick, you may have to remind me, I I have COVID memory when it comes to years, I think it was 2020. It was updated in 2020 to be more equitable as the rates were distributed. Prior to that, it had been a flat fee that was associated with each water meter, which meant that a single family resident would pay $4 and a multifamily housing unit would have potentially four meters and only pay $16. So this fee was redistributed at that time. There were no additional funds that came into environment, into the fund balance, but it made it a more equitable distribution based on consumption.
Okay, so follow up question then. So then everyone that has a water meter benefits from this fund. They're using it in some way. They're using whatever services that they get in some way. Is that, am I correct? I'm just trying to, all I'm doing is trying to help people understand exactly what those fees go to support. And if I'm, and am I using that service? And if I am, what is the service that I'm using? That requires me to pay for that?
Councilmember Harris, I I'm not comfortable taking that question. I believe you use all those services, yes, but.
And if I might, we're starting to get to a point where there are some things that go out with the the water bill when it goes out, but we're we're not talking about adjustments to those tonight. We're talking about adjustments to the actual water rate. I understand how it's related in that, hey, if this is something that's part of the the bill that you receive or the invoice that you receive, understanding how and why. But we're not looking at adjustments to those points tonight, just the the water services themselves. Not that that shouldn't be answered. I I think you can get an answer to your question. I just don't know that it fits really well within our discussion here tonight.
And let me, let me see if maybe I can answer a little bit more is what we send out is a municipal bill. It's not just a water bill. It's more about services in our community. So trash is on your bill. These types of services are all on your bill, including taxes and all that other services we provide. The the consumption and the the fees are just a a way to measure and gather revenues to provide the services that we have through our forest thinning, water resource management. Water, wildland fire management as well as sustainability. It's just a mechanism that ties into on your water bill. But it's not about water specifically.
And and if I may, Mayor and Council, Rick just made the point precisely. Tonight, we're here about water. Those other items are not water.
Yep. I'm just gonna say quickly that maybe staff could answer this question and send out a memo on it or something like that, so we don't have to get into it tonight. Staff would have more time to refine the answer. You know, what are all these other fees on our utility bill?
Councilmember Matthews.
Thank you, Mayor. And I just wanted to follow up with that. I I had the same similar conversation with Shannon, trying to understand this rate exercise that we're going through and in trying to peel the layers off because it impacts our customers, whether they're residential or commercial overall. I'm looking at a bill right now where those two other fees that have nothing to do with the rate increase, but it's an additional $50. And so when we start talking about impacts to our local economy and our residents and our local businesses, it's important for us as council members, or at least for me, to understand the bigger picture, like when we cut it out and just say, well, this water rate's just this and water treatment rate is this. Separately, they may not seem so big, but when we start saying, well, let's put them all together and let's look, look at what a bill looks like. Then it's important to us to communicate with the community to say, when when they start seeing these changes on their water bill, they're, they, we want to know when they start asking those line item questions, what that is. And I don't want to answer, I have no idea where that money goes to, right? Because then they don't think we're being very fiscally responsible with monies that we're charging them for services. So it is important. So I know Nicole's on the line and thank you, Councilmember McCarthy, for asking for it. I would like more information and be more knowledgeable in that because this is gonna have a pretty good impact on our local businesses and and consumers. And I think we all will benefit from understanding these other things that didn't change, but now people are gonna start paying more attention to their bill. And so I would like an answer for that. You will get that. Thank you.
All right, thanks so much. I don't see any other questions or comments. I don't see any public participation. So, thanks.
Thank you very much.
And this is for public participation? Okay. All right, moving down.